Hey, Janet.
Hey.
Can you see that PowerPoint on your screen?
Yes.
Perfect.
You got everybody you're looking for?
Yeah.
That's gonna be a plan. That'll work. Give it till 7:30.
One missed, two missed.
So we have a quorum.
Yes. All right, it's 7:30. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order for today. We do have a quorum for the Board of Supervisors with all members present. And Mr. Moyer?
We have a quorum present, must be true.
Great. That sounds wonderful. So we'll go ahead and kick off the agenda. Turn it over to you all from the Planning Commission side.
All right. Well, open the public hearing. Anyone have any questions on the two things coming up? Do we have to have a public hearing on those two or go straight to Mr. Harris's?
For the minutes?
No, if we go public hearing.
Yeah, Holly, maybe just want to recap the two, those recap the ordinance amendments as.
The new ones we have for this.
For the public hearing.
Public hearing.
Those are not, those are the updated ones. Those are new ones for today.
Oh, all right.
They're just similar to what we had last month, but they are different.
Okay, that's what I mean. Yeah, so you can recap them so we can get into a public hearing form. Right?
Yes, so we'll do that. And then y'all are going into yours to start CIP. Okay.
No, the comment is that you have a joint public hearing between the County Commission and the Board of Supervisors.
Great, okay.
And your topics are your two items that you're going to make.
Okay, all right, we're good. I'm straight now. All right. So the first ordinance amendment, this was suggested last month and we talked about it a little bit, is an amendment to the zoning ordinance to reduce the required front building setbacks in the M1 and M2 industrial zoning districts from 100 feet on public and private roads and 25 feet from access roads to 75 feet where lots with lots for the frontage on arterial roads and 25 feet for all other lots. Understand that's a lot of words. So the ordinance currently states that for all industrial zone properties, the setbacks have to be 100 feet. The only exception is 25 feet and that's from access roads. The county doesn't really have many access roads. Most of our roads are public or private. So arterial roads, because unless you work for VDOT, that's probably a pretty big term. This is the map of arterial roads in the county. So our principles are 360 and 307 and minor arterial road are Route 38, Gads Bridge and 153. So that when the 75 setback would be from the roads listed here and then it would be 25 feet for any other road. Okay, is that, okay. All right, so just for reference, because I got in a couple of calls from Planning Commissioners wondering what other localities were doing. You can see the setbacks. So the main ones we're looking at are the front setback. So for Amelia right now, we're basically all 100 because we don't have access rates. So if you look across, you can see we are a bit steeper than other localities. And the 7525 that I'm proposing is what Powhatan currently does. And it's a happy medium for some of the other localities like Prince Edward and Buckingham. So if you all have any questions about that or don't feel comfortable with these numbers, just let me know.
Any questions from anybody? I think we kind of discussed some of it last time, but.
I think that is pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah, I do think your information, it's helpful to have the map for the specific roads and that, that was good. No, I'm just saying that was good information. All right, so we should do the, let's just do them one at a time then. So yeah, we'll open the floor to public comments, the public hearing portion. Let's see, and that's Mr. Harris. All right, we have nobody in here. Have you received any email comments or anything offline? And at this point, we have no callers for comments. All right, with no comments in person or online, we'll close the public comment portion. And if you want to take us to the size.
So the second amendment I have for you all is an amendment to the county zoning ordinance to reduce the minimum required lot area within a district from one acre to 10,000 square feet in M1 and M2 industrial zones. Okay, so again, we're looking at the bottom here. So right now, you have to have three acres to create. So if you were doing a rezoning, three acres to create a district and a minimum one acre lot. Some localities don't have a minimum at all. Powhatans, I was unable to find. And then Prince Edward had 10,000, which seems like a fair medium. So.
Have you got any feedback as this has been proposed? Like, have you heard people just commenting?
Yes, a lot of people were very surprised to hear that ours was one acre already and that our setbacks were so steep. So I definitely haven't gotten any negative feedback about this. And we have one project going through right now in the industrial park that this will directly benefit as well.
So this second one just is for M1 and M2s?
Correct. This is not business, just industrial.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it would also be beneficial in the, I know we can't. I'm wondering if it would also be beneficial in the business. Yeah. Something to consider.
Business ones are different, though.
Are they already different?
They are. They're less stringent.
They already are.
There are no side and no rear setbacks at all.
Right.
And then the front depends on the right of way width. So it's 50 and up and 50 and under is the breaker there.
And what's, what about the minimum sizes? Do you know, do you remember that? That's okay. It's not, it's not up for tonight anyway.
But we're going to be bringing more tech amendments, so business can be the next on the list to go through.
Are we?
They don't have a minimum lot size.
Oh, that's actually a good comparison, though, obviously, for this, no minimum. All right, any comments or questions in the room before we open for this public hearing? All right, we'll open the public comment portion for the hearing now. Are you able to see if anyone has called in? I mean, I went to Box Minimise, I don't know.
Yeah, it's just.
She's the only other person?
Yep.
Okay. All right, and you said you've received nothing formal and no formal comments for this one either? All right. If no one in the room or online or pre-submitted comments, so we'll close the public hearing on this one as well. And then can move to the special exception permit. For the last of the joint public hearing items.
Okay, so our applicant who is here tonight, Brian Harris, is requesting a special exception permit to convert an existing building in Amelia Bottom into an automotive repair shop. It is located off of Gads Bridge Road. The applicant is proposing minimal changes to the outside. It would be a new garage door and a new entrance door on the side of the building and new lighting. There will be no changes to the front of the building. He's just going to be changing the sides. And he's here to answer more questions about that. I do have some photos of the property just to give you a better visual. So this is the front. So this will stay the same. His business is going to be located directly off the side, which is fixed over here.
So it's not the whole building, though? It's only, only the far left?
Yep. Yeah, so this is Gads Bridge. You come down here, this is all asphalt. The front of the building, so you'd go along the gravel on the side and he's just making the shovel on the side. Yeah, so this is zone B1. Most uses like this are permitted by right, but automotive repair shops, because of the environmental and noise and everything that goes along with it, do require special exception. He is putting in a firewall and fire suppression system and a sound barrier as extra protection to adjoining properties.
What's in the other part of the building there? Anything?
He did say right here, there are several different offices, including a comic book shop.
Comic book shop is in the front of the building now, and then he has two offices. And then there's like three offices on one end of the building that aren't rented yet.
Right. So the owner has offices, Mr. Contry has offices at this end.
You'd be leasing that portion of the building? You're leasing that portion of the building from him?
And then actually the fire suppression system and the firewalls are already in place. All of that stuff is later.
It was a cabinet shop, so I'm sure that stuff is.
Yeah.
On point.
They had a firewall.
Makes sense. All right, comments, questions or discussion from in the room?
I assume it's some other setbacks as to how long vehicles can sit.
Yes, so that's a good point. Planning Commissioner Easter called me today. He was unable to make it, but that was a question that he had. He was concerned that it could be very slow to having junk cars there and he wanted that as a condition. But we talked about it and that's already in the county code. That you have to have license and registration.
I guess the same thing for all and stuff like that.
Yes. Yep.
Okay. Who enforces the, making sure that vehicles are licensed and currently registered?
Environmental. So Patty Agric, she's, she's the person who responds to all of those calls of junk cars and too many tires, because you know, only have a max of 10 tires. And I think it's three vehicles. She's the one who enforces all of that.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to open the floor to comments for the public hearing portion of this item as well.
I did get an email on this one. Allison Cruz emailed me to say she's in full support of this. And wanted me to show that. She's happy to see the building being used.
Thank you. All right, we have no one else joined us online and no one else in person with comments. I'll close the public hearing portion for this one as well. I believe that is the extent of the joint meeting portion. Anyone else say? All right, with that, I'm trying to motion to adjourn the joint meeting.
I'm moved.
All right, all those in favor, respond with a "I". All right, we are adjourned from the public, the joint, let's all take over for the Planning Commission.
We have a quorum. With your pleasure on the minutes, the joint public hearing on January 25th and then the planning commission meeting on January 25th. You know, motion, accept. Their second. Any more discussion? All in favor, making no mistake, an "a"? All opposed, same sign. The whole business, if you look into your packet. Probably come up with this sheet first. I believe it's the eighth. January, if I'm not mistaken. And they brought this up. This is what's been worked on right now. It's already been approved. And you'll see over the notes down the side, that's what we could find out as the progress on those projects. When we came in that day, a lot of them were blank. How far along were they or did you not need the money, going change your mind, things like that? So you can see what, what's in the progress now. Turn to the back of that page.
Are you referring to a subcommittee meeting or something? Are y'all referring to a subcommittee meeting?
Subcommittee meeting. You know, we met with four departments.
That's right, yep. Public Works, Emergency Management and Parks and Parks.
Each of them kind of discuss whatever was there, you know, comments there. And then we'll get asked questions. And got some answers and some answers we weren't quite sure about. But you can see there what we kind of picked the top priority, the medium priority and the lower priority. This year was set up a little different. Normally, we had a dollar value working with. Didn't have a dollar value. We're trying to come up with what probably the most important coming down the list. After discussing, talking to all of them, looked like everybody needed a study to find out what they actually needed. So monies were put up. That was one thing came out of there. And of course, the fire station paving, that's the last one. I think that's the only station has not been paved. So that was already on the program. Be done for this coming year. And as far as the school, I asked the superintendent what she needed the most and she said it was the internet within the county. That's not in here, but she said that's, with this virtual, and she says she can see from now on is they're going to have to have virtual from here out. She doesn't think it's going, everybody's going to have to come to school. It's going to have to be available. So that was one concern. Even the school, if you had a whole lot better I guess thinking in their approach to this. Sometimes you ask a question, you couldn't get an answer. At this time, we, we got pretty good answers. And they were still pretty strong on the thing that they needed to study to find out how much life is left in each of the schools. What was really needed. You might notice and don't have that in here, but a couple of things came up. One was a new cafeteria for the middle school. Redo the bathrooms in the middle school. Stream.
If you look, the later years are in there and you can see some of those, those big.
So.
The bathroom project was middle and high.
Yeah.
Not just middle.
But.
Still a lot of money, but.
A lot of money, but.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Really need to kind of find out what they need. If the one middle school, the bathrooms and the cafeteria, that comes out about four and a half, five million dollars. If that's a school that really needs a whole lot more improvement, maybe need to spend that money on a new build, totally thing. I don't know.
I don't know why you can build a cafeteria for what it costs to renovate a couple of bathrooms. I don't know that those numbers are.
I don't know, but that's just the figures that came back. And I guess y'all do know the cafeteria in the middle school is a separate building offset. Didn't meet the size and they gave a lot of good explanations why it needed. And I know it's been there as long as I can remember, but.
Isn't that a metal building?
It's, I believe it's a metal building. So, but they were pretty curious about getting this study started. Come back next year with what they think really needs to be done. But anybody else on committee wanting to make a comment? The sports complex came in and that 167 was like to be set aside for three years to get a half a million. And hopefully, hopefully, they could, if you had a pot of money, you could get some grant money to match it. But we thought, right now, they weren't sure on some of these other things that we had a study come a little better. And it wasn't any guarantee that you'd get pot money after, after that. So we kind of put that on the low end. And I think half a million, that was just pretty much getting the study done. And they were looking at is it 50 to 200 acres? 300 acres for a sports complex. Now, where you'll find that in the county close by is going to be a little harder. But but that, that's the only reason we moved it down. We didn't think it might not be. If the county had and the supervisors had the money, you know, it could be set aside. But right now, we thought, you know, till it's pretty much guaranteed. I mean, I just made a building facility for my cows and I thought I was going to have some money and I got it all built, no money. So I ended up pocketing it out. So I'm a little more leery on this thing. It's pots of money out there. It's out there, but chances of getting it's kind of slim. Any questions on that?
Can I throw out a daydream?
Yeah, you can throw out anything.
You know, I've always thought bad that Redstone didn't do something for the youth of Amelia when he passed away, but he, he gave it all to Liberty. And Liberty has so much money now. They're tearing down the building and tearing down the building just to spend it. And a far-fetched dream would be for someone to approach Liberty and ask them if they would consider building a sports complex here in his honor. Now, that's a dream, but something to think about. I know in Guatemala, Liberty just pours the money into lots of things in Guatemala. Everything I passed on, there's Liberty University on it. We're right next to Liberty University in comparison to that. Just a thought.
You think we ought to carry that to Board of Supervisors to approach Liberty with that suggestion?
All they can say is no.
Did they get just all land? I mean, all dollars that they get land?
They got all stuff, everything. I understand right now, there's a house that someone is willing to purchase, but and, and it was clearly laid out what to do with the house, but not the contents. So I mean, they just got, you know, they got everything. But it can't hurt to ask.
No, it's not. That's a very good suggestion.
It's a dream, but.
I mean, even if they, if they could give the land, then you could come up with the monies.
Well, they've, they've got the land.
Yeah.
But at this point, Liberty is just building. They're buying whole shopping centers and tearing them down and building. They're tearing down things they built not long ago. I mean, it's just, they've got so much money they've got to spend.
They've got 30, they're on 460. There's always something going on.
At one time, the young man that was in charge of those projects, he burned every crane within 70 miles. Nobody else was going to be able to get a crane. Because they were all there building at Liberty. This is about a year ago. But I mean, it's something to think about.
Yeah, good suggestion. You put that in notes?
Yeah.
Anybody else have suggestions? But they would, if, if they would, I mean, that may be approached. I mean, even that or, you know, land for school.
Yeah. But I know that they, they have a long-reaching arm with their donations.
Yeah.
I've sat there and watched containers come in off the docks in Guatemala loaded with things from Liberty. And the buildings, mechanic shops, schools, training centers. You name it, they've built it down there.
All right. Anybody else have any comments on CIP report?
I have a question. How, how did you, how did, how did the committee, you like doing that without the, the money and having to worry about that? I mean, I know it's the first time, but would.
Truthfully, yes. Now, I'm not sure with what we had, I think it worked fine.
Right, there's not.
Now, if they come back with you know, some realistic figures, I think it may be a little harder.
Right.
But I think, I think it would be easier not having a ceiling.
Right, right. We're good.
If you can kind of categorize stuff, but not having a ceiling. But I mean, kind of like, when I looked at it, two and a half million for bathrooms, I thought, man, I know what I pay for that whole complex. I got 300 agents. You know, but I'm sure to meet the health standards, she'd have jackhammer everything out and they'd have to do it in a small period of time when school's not going on. I mean, I could see, but that's kind of a ripoff, I think. But.
I'd like to get that contract.
But I'm just saying, you know, I could, I could see that for a cafeteria. You've got to have a pretty good sized cafeteria, you know, cooler and you totally facilitate cafeteria. You could, you could spin that pretty easily, but you know, I don't know. Of course, I know, you know, with these new guidelines, bathrooms got to be about where you live in, so. But they said, like, I think the middle school still has a little teeny commodes and all, and you got fifth, sixth and seventh graders or fourth, fifth and sixth, something in there, so.
I would have thought they would have upgraded those bathrooms when they transitioned a few years ago.
When they renovated the school.
When they renovated the school.
You would have thought.
You would have thought that, but you know, on the CIP committee for a number of years, it's a lot of miscommunication over in there.
I understand that, yes.
And I think that's kind of where they gotten the problem, that money deal a few years ago. But it's miscommunication because we've asked them, they come in and ask for the same thing. You know, one year and it's already been approved in the budget. They never came over to check, you know. But the people that were in this time were more up on top.
Good. That's encouraging.
The new director of operations. The new director of operations is going to be a lot better.
Yeah, he's a whole lot better. I mean, he knew what was going on, what cost and they were still, you know, dicking around, trying to find certain costs and things. So I mean, I was very impressed with them this year, very impressed. Oh, yeah, you would think that, but you know. And I think middle school one time had younger kids and then they switched it to older kids. I don't know, but. But I guess the middle school is the oldest building over there. Certainly, so. Any question? Can I get a motion in to pass this on to the Board of Supervisors? To use it as a, I guess, a work order or a lineup what we thought might be the best account. Motion made as a second? Made a second, all in favor, making no mistake, an "a"? All opposed, the same sign. Any other whole business anybody knows of? All right, get back to my sheet here. Going into the new business, was any comments On the first ordinance amendment? Not, can I get a motion? To pass it on to the board supervisors for their. Approval? Motion's made, second, all in favor, make a no, must say an "a". All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, how about the second amendment? I think most of them just kind of came back into line. A lot of these amendments have been somewhat outdated, or. Maybe we've already passed stuff that really didn't meet the ordinance correctly, so these kind of updating them. Motion's made, is it second? Made in second, all in favor, make a no, must say an "a". All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, we got the special exemption permit from Mr. Harris. Any questions on that, or a motion? Or approval to pass that on to the board supervisors for their consideration? Motion's made, is it second, motion made in second? Any more discussion? All in favor, make a no, must say an "a". All opposed, same sign. Mr. Harris, that'll come to the board supervisors the second Wednesday of next month, I think. Third Wednesday, excuse me. And they won't have a public hearing on that, they'll just discuss it at that point. I'm sure you'll get a letter explanation on that. Also, why I'm on these amendments. Mr. Scott emailed me about a month ago, and. He said with Holly new on the job, a lot of these ordinances, maybe need to be a little bit updated, since she's got to go over all of them and kind of get familiarized with them. So maybe we ought to pick, let her pick two or three to bring each month, if we had a meeting to kind of update, you know. How do y'all feel on that? Okay, not, y'all let me know.
I think it'd be good, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
It would be good for all of us. And if any of y'all at any point have suggestions of ones you think need some addressing, email me, call me.
Well, you saw consensus, so that's what we'll do. I don't think we need a motion. Thank you, miss. I have no other comments at this point, does anyone have any other suggestions or comments? Do you have anything, Holly, for next month that you know of?
I haven't gotten any, anything for any resignings or special exceptions or anything, and. And they've due by the close of business on Friday. Haven't talked to anyone, so I doubt we'll have anything, so just the text of it next month, probably.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Sure.
I, I don't know if everybody in here knows, the board has been kicking around the idea of extending water and sewer down 360. I'd like to know how the planning commission thinks or feels about that.
If you can get the canyon to grow, it's going to have to go that way.
Excuse me?
To get the canyon to grow, I think that's where you want it. I think also you're going to have to think if it's going down there, is the word, the next. Wastewater plant ought to be. Because I mean, you start getting further down 370. That's a long way.
Yeah.
Way from the cemetery to be pumping.
Yeah.
And you know. It's all uphill. So. I think that's only other considerations, trying to keep that in mind as to. That, of course, I guess the study now on the water, another water tire, if need be, probably ought to be in that area too. Because that's probably where majority of water will be. Because he did, I asked, comment on, for Daryl, how many. Available water, I guess, hookups, he said, right now, we had right many, I mean, I forgot what the total was.
He did say we did.
Had plenty.
We had room to play with.
Had the room to play with, but you know, if you build anything much. More, you know, you probably want most of that type of stuff closer to the courthouse, if you've built an apartment or things like that, instead of down 360. Guess the only thing you'd have to worry, I guess you'd have to stay on the south side of 360 because of railroad. The only thing you'd have to worry, I guess you'd have to stay on the south side of 360 because of railroad. Probably be the best. I know it's expensive.
Yeah.
How far, where's it stop now? Just on the other side of Food Line?
Food Line, yeah. And we were talking about bringing it down to Butler's Road.
Butler's Road?
For now.
I mean, that's something you always got to keep in the back of your mind, for sure.
Do you speak for everyone else, or? Are you speaking for everyone else, or do they have come?
I'm just speaking for myself. I mean, they need to speak for themselves. What do you think, John, you'd have a member?
County ought to have that kind of goal, that long-term.
Well, it's in the comprehensive plan, that is, that is the goal, it has been for years.
And the longer you wait, more expensive it gets.
Yeah, and interest is, I mean, money's getting pretty close to free right now, I mean, interest is so low. It's only going to go up. In government. So we, if, just if y'all want to know, we currently have around 400 house connections for water and reserve with our current system. And this number's over your old, but it was 667 sewer connections.
600?
Yeah, with our current system.
And those are.
The capacity. Yes. Capacity. For capacity. We're only, we're using less than half of it, I believe. Right, right. A lot of, a lot of cushion.
Yeah, that was a total. So we're about 50%.
You know, as long as we don't bring in an industry, like a, like a nursery or something that uses.
Lots of the water.
Yes, yeah, with our current, right.
But it's with the industrial park growing. Hopefully, that's where you want it, that's going to take a lot more sewer and a lot more water, too.
This industrial park is almost full, with what's going on in there right now, it'll be, it will be full.
But isn't it something that hasn't not been developed yet?
Yeah, but there's.
They're all being looked at. A lot of stuff going on in there right now.
That's good.
Yeah.
I know that was in the CIP. Plan a couple of years ago about clearing some land, lots in there, or, or more.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Anyone else having comments, Mr. Scott? Question, yes.
I'm not sure what the question is, other than, do we support it?
Yeah, just generally in concept, do you support? Of course, you know, it all comes down to the money and where we're going to get it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, yeah, I support doing that, I, I also support having a plan to figure out how to pay for it. You know, I think, like Mark said, that's where I think the county needs to grow, and it needs that to grow. Like, like anything else, you just need to have a plan, how you going to do it, how you going to pay for it?
Yep, of course.
Any more questions or comment?
Kind of plan to like, maybe a committee to do some cost analysis on that or something?
You'd have to ask the board.
It's already being looked at by the engineering firms that we use. It's being designed, and it costed up. Yeah, I think it's supposed to be back April or May, I believe. Yeah. I got so many studies on my mind, but. I think that one was for May.
That's one thing we did learn, is they had to study for everything, studies the library. Study for the Hindu building.
Animal shelter.
Animal shelter, that's a known, they want about four million.
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec.
They don't want four million, don't, don't, not even close.
I'm just saying, two years ago, that's what they came in.
The library came in two years ago with 10 million.
Yeah, so I mean, I mean, a lot of studies going on, so finally, I think they. All the ones have asked me, I said, well, first you got to know what you want, what you need. All of them dream like the 10 million library, I said, what do you need? I need 10 million, I, I mean, what do you need?
What are you going to do?
What do you have to have? Because you start looking down the road, as far as library, you know, you're going to need space for books, or everything now is going to computers and CDs and all that. And with technology. Of course, I think the main thing we got to get in the county is some internet service, and this new radio system that they're working on. We've needed that for a long time, so.
Well, we got good news on internet last week, that tower in Manboro that was so controversial, almost wasn't going to happen, got approved.
Oh, it did?
Yeah.
Well, that's.
So that construction is going to begin imminently.
That's good. Sure, John would appreciate that. Anything else? I mean, what more suggestions we have, you know, you know, I always feel a suggestion that, no matter how crazy it is, and no suggestion too crazy. Somebody will come up with a good answer. I appreciate everybody coming out, and everybody's own call, I guess Jan is selling a call?
Yeah, just Jan.
And. Holly is.
Excuse me, Mark.
Go ahead.
Can you talk just a little bit about how this process will work for the ordinances and what you expect from them?
What exactly?
Like, if you pick two, what, what are you going to expect from them as input, and, you know, are you going to give it to them in advance of the next meeting, or?
I mean, I send their packets out about two-ish weeks ahead of time.
So that, so the.
So they get it, yeah.
So if you pick two, and all your suggested edits and everything will be given to them two weeks in?
Yeah, they get it in the packet two weeks ahead of time, all the edits and everything are in there.
Cool.
You know, some of them might be three, some might be four, if all of them were close together, or. Might have just one big one. One big one, a lot of sub, sub parts.
Yeah, exactly.
So, but. Well, knowing all the comments, appreciate you coming, we'll adjourn the meeting.